Call to order the June 16th meeting of the Cary Town Council. Before we get started, I want to let everybody know that Ms. Bush is on the family vacation and will not be joining us this evening. Now, we're ready for the opening, and I'll recognize Councilmember Smith for our ceremonial opening. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. As we all know, this has been a difficult week for our nation. I'd like you all to join me in a moment of silence and prayer. Please bow your heads. Thank you. Amen. May God have comfort their souls and look after their families. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second? Is a motion and a second discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Interim Town Manager Mike Bajoric for the operational update.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Carl to get us started with a review of our revenue picture for this fiscal year.
Good evening, Council. You see before you the projected revenues for this year. The green bar showing our surplus over the budgeted revenue amount has continued to grow up to an amount over $4 million at this point. Since we saw you last time and talked about this, the areas that have improved in their projection are the ad valorem property tax, permits and fees, helped along a little bit by the fees from the SASS building that was permitted this spring. In the area of sales and service, we've had some improvement in our parks revenue projection. Investment earnings are up based on higher investment rates. And also, in the other taxes, we've seen an improvement in our expected ABC store distribution revenue. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions from Council.
Thank you, Carl.
Good information.
Mayor, just a few other items for the update. I am glad to say that Cary was recognized as the safest community for drivers in America. NerdWallet analyzed the risk for drivers of the nation's most populous cities. They looked at car crashes and the number of fatal accidents, vehicle-related crimes, and other factors determined which cities are the safest. Cary was ranked the number-one safest city for drivers with only 1.3 fatal accidents per 100,000 residents. According to their website, and we all know if it's on the web, it's correct.
It's always good.
Drivers in the most dangerous cities can expect to pay 642% more on average for similar coverage than Cary citizens could. Second thing, Cary was also nominated for the National Recreation and Parks Association Gold Medal Award, which is the organization's highest award. As part of the nomination process, a five-minute video of the Cary Park System has been produced by the town and is currently on the town's website for all citizens to view, and it is a great production that I would recommend everyone look at. The selection of the gold medal winner will be made in October of this year at the association's national conference. And finally, yesterday, staff submitted a project proposal to Wake County to use a portion of the $3.3 million that is available in the Phase 1 distribution of the occupancy and prepared food and beverage tax. This submittal can be found off of a link on the Town Manager's page on our website. Now, while this is not directly related to our current efforts to obtain increased annual allocations to more closely match the town's contributions, any funds we get reduces our subsidy toward other purposes. I want to thank a staff team that developed this proposal. It was led by Tim Bailey, our Assistant Manager. It consisted of employees from our transportation facilities, our Parks and Rec Department, and our IT people who just worked together to really develop a very strong proposal. We should hear something in August if we were successful with it. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Bajoric. Thank you very much. Good report. Okay, and we now move to the Public Speaks Out portion of our meeting. This agenda item has included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. And if you'd like to speak at this forum, I'd ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and they speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing. And it would be to your benefit to wait for the public hearing because you have five minutes then. As I said, there'll be a three-minute time limit, and to be fair to all of our speakers, I'm going to enforce that time limit. There's a timer on the podium, the speaker's podium, and when the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when time expires, that yellow light turns to a flashing red light, and at that time, I'll interrupt you, immediately interrupt you, and ask you to stop your comments, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. Please understand, I'd ask everyone in the audience to please understand and respect that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to the consent agenda. This is item four on the agenda. For the benefit of people watching on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes. The Hannah Property Resonating 16REZO5 inconsistency statement, Lewis Lynch Family LTD partnership annexation 16AO7, formal consideration to approve Triangle Regional Call Center transit agreement, amendments to Traffic Schedule 14 that includes speed limits to Hittard Sears Road SR 1732 and O'Kelly Chapel Road SR 1731, addition to Traffic Schedule 8, which includes prohibited parking all times on Wax Myrtle Court, amendment to Traffic Schedule 8 prohibited parking, which includes all times at Village Square at Amberly, exchange of property between the Town of Cary and Lloyd and Denise Sorrell. Now's the time for council members to pull any of these items for discussion. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve in its entirety?
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings. This is item five on the agenda. Our first public hearing is the fiscal year 2017 proposed budget, and Mr. Knapp will present this item. We're going to open the public hearing. Council will not take action on the budget this evening. Mr. Knapp?
Mayor and Council, the manager's recommended budget was presented to Council on May 12 at the regular meeting. Since that time, it has been available to the public at both public libraries and on the town's website and here at Town Hall. Council has conducted two work sessions so far to review and revise the budget and the public hearing required by state law. Tonight, we hold a second public hearing to provide an additional opportunity beyond that required by the law for the members of the public to speak out on the budget. Council will hold another workshop on the budget to review staff-recommended changes on the 22nd, and then we'll vote on the adopted budget on June 27th. That, Mayor. I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Now's the time for the public hearing for this year's fiscal's 2017 budget, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
My name is Nathaniel Green. I've been a resident of Cary for two years, and I have been passionately advocating for the Cameron Pond Park. First, I do want to thank you all for your consideration of this park, this budget cycle. I know it's been a lot of work, and you've all received a lot of emails from me and other residents, and I appreciate you obviously going through those and reviewing them. I actually really saw your consideration on display at the Budget Work Session on Monday, and I was struck when two separate motions were introduced at the Budget Work Session that would result in the master planning of this park for the fiscal year 2017. Unfortunately, these motions did not pass, only with a majority of four votes of seven against them. I also recognize that these were only two of many possible motions that could be entertained in the future that would result in the master planning of the park for the fiscal year 2017 budget. Therefore, I'd like to make an appeal to you tonight to reconsider one in the future. When I moved to Cary, I'll be honest, I told people I lived in West Cary. I was new to the area. I moved to a neighborhood called Cameron Pond, and naturally, we are in the western portion, and there's a few natural barriers to community in our area. North Carolina Highway 55 is a big one, as well as North Carolina 540. I thought it was what everyone did and said, and my area of Cary is a fast-growing and densely populated area, and we are a bunch of transplants, and there's not a lot of North Carolina natives in our area. There was such tremendous growth that in our area, a local church that you know, Crosspoint Church, mostly made of Cary residents, has decided to raise millions of dollars to attract the YMCA to build a location. I'd just like to reflect on how big of a thing that this is. This is not a business. This is not a government entity. This is not only not just a nonprofit organization, but a nonprofit that gets funding from its own congregation, which is Cary citizens. So these are Cary citizens who are investing in their own community. To my knowledge, this has been multiple millions of dollars, and to permit this project, I recognize that we're in a surplus tonight. I know that the project has already paid out over $1 million in permitting fees alone for this particular project. The reason this was moved forward is because it was what they thought our community needed. It's what the community of Western Cary needed. But also, I think a way to also help unite Cary, give reasons for citizens who live on the east side of North Carolina 55 to come over to Western Cary and enjoy the resources that we have. Therefore, this is my proposed plan. I would ask that we consider appropriating funds still to plan Cameron Pond Park and a greenway to connect that YMCA, that big investment, again, is not by business but by our own citizens, to the existing greenways that we have and already have planned. There's a very small portion of greenway from that future site to the greenway that will be built this summer that will connect the Cameron Pond neighborhood to the future Mills Park site, which is also being constructed. I would then ask that for fiscal year 2018, we go full force and still plan the design of the project as well. I recognize this will be a significant amount of money, $100,000 in fiscal year 2017, approximately $750,000 in fiscal year 2018. But my suggestion would be to plan to pay back those funds with a 2018 bond referendum. So initially, the money would come from green money. However, we would replenish that fund if the bond were to pass. If we made this, now, we know that a bond is not a sure thing, and that it would be a bit of a gamble, but you would be taking a chance on our own residents and our own community and our own investments that have already happened. I think this is why you have a viable plan. Such a bet would really rally all of our area residents to also move and rally for the park bond to pass. I can assure you, I would work tirelessly to make sure that this park bond would pass. And the galvanization that's already happened as a result of the situation with Cameron Pond Park in this fiscal year budget has already galvanized our community. I can promise you, we already have a significant group of people that will be able to support this bond and make sure that does pass in fiscal year 2018. I'd also like to look a little bit bigger and focus on a project that was already considered in the Budget Work Session on Monday, that is, the construction of the entire Panther Creek Greenway that would unite the eastern sections of Cary and the central sections of Cary to the western sections of Cary. That includes a grade-separated crossing across North Carolina 55, and I can imagine if there's a big sign that says "Town of Cary" on that as I'm driving to my home, there's no way I'd be able to say that I live in West Cary. I would have to say that I live in the Town of Cary. Thank you, guys, for your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Next speaker, please. Could I get you to move to your left?
Hi, my name is Rachel Lamb, and this is?
Jack.
Jack Yarborough, and we're both born and raised in Cary. And we're here to speak on behalf of Special Olympics for the nonprofit grant, and we'd first like to thank you for considering Special Olympics for this grant specifically, Project Unify. And what Project Unify is, is it is a club run through Special Olympics in schools that promotes inclusion of those with and without disabilities and creates friendships and bonds. And Jack and I have grown up in a school that has, or not grown up, but you know, we went through entire high school that had Project Unify. And I can say that my high school and his high school experience was both greatly impacted by Project Unify and all the things that they do, and so this money will go towards helping schools implement inclusion through sports and this club. Jack, do you feel that through Project Unify, your high school experience was fun?
I think the hope's good.
It's good?
Yeah, that is good.
So basically, one of the components of Special Olympics is whole-school engagement. So not only are the people who go to the club impacted and seeing the abilities of people without disabilities and with disabilities, we do this through just having pep rallies, videos, just to show the entire school. Another is youth advocacy, which is what we're doing right now, where by going out and showing the community that people with disabilities should be taken seriously and seen as people in school and not just someone with a disability. And another is unified sports, which is something that we compete in together, and that is a sports team that is composed of equally people with and without disabilities. And so that is the three core components of Project Unify that just really help to make a school environment inclusive and understanding of those with disabilities. And I think that this is something so important that you should consider for this grant because it's not only affecting the students that come to the club, as I said, it's affecting the whole school, and through affecting the whole school, it's also affecting the community by them going home and telling their parents, wow, I saw Jack run the 100-meter dash, and he was amazing. And it's impacting this generation, but by impacting this generation, it's also impacting other generations through all of this. And Cary High School is one of the schools in Cary that participates in this, and there are many others. And actually, in the past couple of years, many others have even seen our schools and gotten jealous and tried to join, and so we have, just it's a continuing movement that I hope to see one day that every single high school, elementary school, and middle school will be participating in Project Unify. So we'd like to thank you for your continuing support of this movement and hope that you consider us further for this grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb. Thank you, Jack. Next speaker, please.
Thank you for having me this evening. I'm Ann Rollins, the Executive Director at the Alice Haycock Post Center for Health Education, and I want to thank you for your past support. You've been supporting our organization since 2012, and we do appreciate that. We support the Town of Cary's mission to empower the lives of Cary citizens through health education and food insecurity and other programming. It also helps fund the cost of the programs that we do for the Cary citizens and the schools. Last year, we were able to work with over 800 Cary citizens directly, and then indirectly with our social marketing, we had over a million and a half hits with our TV, radio, and our Move More campaign. This is a special year for the Post Center. We're celebrating our 25th year, and we're having a year-long Add 25, and I'm proud to say that we worked with Ms. North Carolina, and I've got one of these for each of y'all. It's a magnet that you can add 25 to your day, 25 more steps or 25 more miles, Mayor. And we're proud to say that Penny Road Elementary won the campaign that we did with Ms. North Carolina this spring, and they were able to add 25. And she came and did a program at the school for the parents and the students. And Michelle Leroy, the fifth-grade teacher at Penny Road Elementary quoted, "My kids truly enjoy," sorry, "truly enjoyed it and look forward to our hashtag Add 25 activity each day for the month of March." They wanted to make sure that I would continue doing our fitness brain break, so I have a little brain break for y'all. So when you get stressed thinking about your budget for the town, you have a brain break. And that they had tasting Thursdays, and the kids wanted that to continue. So we are proud of the work we do with the Town of Cary, and we appreciate your support in the past and hope that you'll continue to fund programming with the Post Center.
Thank you.
I'm Justin Booth here with Carying Place on behalf of our nonprofit request application. Many of you know the Carying Place, but Carying Place teaches homeless working families with children life skills for attaining independent living while providing short-term housing and support services to address their individual needs. This is essentially a transitional housing program that is an avenue for homeless working families in the Town of Cary to break free from the cycle of homelessness and become financially viable, permanently housed residents of Cary. TCP began in 1993 and then was incorporated as a nonprofit in 1998. We've worked with over 360 families with a success rate of 90%. Success is measured by prospering families who are in permanent housing one year after graduation. As a Cary-based program, we support families through mentoring and guidance, support partners and caring sponsors directed by two full-time and part-time professional staff. These volunteers provide weekly guidance in managing personal finances, seeking permanent affordable housing, and maintaining a job. Services are also provided to the children of TCP through the TCP's Children's Program, coordinator, and volunteers. We use weekly play therapy to address the needs and trauma brought onto the children by the family's homeless situation. Children's Program staff and volunteers provide some of the best care and management for these children. Over a 16-week period, these families are enlightened about the skills required for self-sufficiency through mandatory one-week meetings with their support partners. During the training program, housing and utilities are paid by the program. The personal support partner experience provides short-term housing and helps bridge the gap between homeless and permanent housing, and it ultimately lasts a lifetime. Currently, TCP owns a triplex, two duplex units, one single-family housing unit, and we rent one apartment. We are also, through the help of Cary's Town CD BG Grant, in the process of acquiring another duplex. With this increase in property ownership, we serve eight transitional families and one permanent family. Our Town of Cary nonprofit request for 2017 has two pressing needs: taking care of the operational expenses TCP incurs, assisting families such as the utilities and the maintenance for our properties, and it also assists with the expense, staff and volunteer expenses, and after-care program expenses used to support graduate families. Fiscal year 2017's Town of Cary nonprofit funding award will help us continue this successful mission and efforts to empower and improve lives of our area homeless. None of this would be possible without the consistent support of the council, town staff, and Cary residents who volunteer with TCP. We rely on continued support of organizations like the Town to maintain a base level of services for our family. This is a unique program to Cary, and we hope to continue our successful partnership with the Town this year and our mission to transform lives of the working homeless around us, a point I hope you'll remember as you review our application for the nonprofit funding request for 2017. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Next speaker for the Budget Public Hearing. Anyone else for the Budget Public Hearing? I thought they were coming down here. Last call. Okay. No one else for the Budget Public Hearing? Are we going to close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments? Seeing none, as Mr. Knapp said, we're going to be continuing on with the budget, and we have a work session on the 22nd, and we are scheduled to vote on the budget on the 27th. All right, we're going to move to our second public hearing this evening. It's an agreement for implementation of the Economic Development Action Plan. Ms. High of our staff will introduce this item, and we may take action this evening. Ms. High?
Good evening, Council. Since 2006, the Town has contracted with the Cary Chamber of Commerce to implement the Economic Development Action Plan. This arrangement is working well, and staff proposes a renewal of that agreement for another three-year period beginning on July 1st. The agreement calls for the Chamber to implement the action steps outlined in the plan, including business recruitment, retention, and expansion, product development, downtown revitalization, regional economic development, small business and entrepreneurial development, and sports development. On the Town's side, the annual cost to the Town is $282,000. And with that, I will turn it back to you.
All right. Now's the time for the public hearing for the Agreement for Implementation of Economic Development Action Plan that I would call our first speaker.
Thank you, Lana. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. I'm Howard Johnson. I'm president of the Cary Chamber, and I first want to just say thank you for what each of you do every day for our community. We have a wonderful place here, and your leadership shows, and we appreciate. So on behalf of the business community, thank you. Second, I want to thank you for allowing us to be your economic development arm and partnership. As Lana stated, we've done it now for 10 years. Now, the guy that's in charge of that is sitting in the audience, and I want to ask him to stand, Kyle Greer. Kyle is our Vice President of Economic Development. Kyle, please stand. And Kyle is doing an exceptional job, and he's the go-to guy in economic development for Cary and for the region. I know we bring you a lot of product, and we're very proud of Kyle, and we're very fortunate to have him in this role. Lana spoke of our scope of work, but what we do every day is our existing business and industry support. We've got a lot of calls across the board of companies that are here that are needing assistance, maybe through something at City Hall or with the state on the federal level. We're there to help. Business recruitment, man, we're in a great place. We're in a great location, and Kyle has been able to build a partnership throughout the region, and we have several clients. We meet monthly with Mike and Lana on bringing them up to date on activity we have. I think we have 4,000 jobs right now in the hopper, if you will. I think we have 4,000 jobs right now in the hopper, if you will, looking at us. So we're very fortunate. Small business entrepreneur development is the thing now. Cary's into it. Kyle is very involved in that from a state perspective and from a local perspective. Downtown, Kyle and Ted are inseparable. These guys work hand-in-hand, granted, doing a great job, and it's paying off, so thank you very much. Sports development, only getting started, only getting started. Travel and tourism and business park development. We've talked about needing more park development in our region, so we work every day on this scope to improve the overall business climate of our community. Your leadership is the driving force in making this happen. Again, thank you for giving us this opportunity, and we look forward to continuing and building off our partnership. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next speaker for this public hearing. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to approve. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Hi.
Thank you.
We now move to our third public hearing. It's a rezoning public hearing, 15 REZ 29 Good Shepherd United Church of Christ rezoning. Ms. Spearman will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this item tonight. It's going to be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board, and then the council will review this at a future meeting. Ms. Spearman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to rezone about 6.5 acres at 1050 Northwest Maynard Road and 305 High House Road. This is a vicinity map. I can see High House Road and then Northwest Maynard Road coming down on this, the southern portion of the property. This is an aerial that shows existing development on the property. This is an existing church building and parking lot that's accessed off of Northwest Maynard Road. And then there is a structure that's currently used for the church office that was formerly a residence that is accessed off of High House Road. The existing zoning for this site is R40. Would also point out that there is a corner of the property that's located on the opposite side of Northwest Maynard Road that is not included in the rezoning request, so that would remain R40. The proposed zoning for the majority of the site is MXD, since this is in an activity center. That's the district that's required for any change. Would also be added, or it's also located within the mixed-use overlay district. That would be maintained. This shows the preliminary development plan for the site. The only physical change proposed to the property with this request is to add a six- space parking lot for use by the office portion of the site. And this, this shows the existing church facility. The yellow is the sanctuary. The purple is a classroom building that's about 2,500 square feet. The purpose of this rezoning basically is to allow a school as an alternate use within that classroom building. The land use plan for the site is low-density residential. The, the plan does support institutional uses within this designation that would support the development in the area. There are no stream buffers shown on the site per the Cary's GIS maps. There is a proposed street-side trail along High House Road. And both High House Road and Northwest Maynard Road are major thoroughfares. And there are some C-Tran routes that access both of these road facilities. This map shows the properties within 800 feet that were notified of the hearing. And that concludes staff's comments. At this time, I would ask the applicant for any additional comments.
This time, I'd invite the applicant forward for their comments.
Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the church. Staff has done an excellent job summarizing the request. Unlike me, I'm not going to add anything to that. I think Ms. Spearman went over all the key points. If you have any questions, I'm here. Also, there's a representative from the church. The engineer is also here if you have any questions. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Top. Now's the time for the public hearing for 15 REZ 29 Good Shepherd United Church of Christ rezoning, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this rezoning public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask council if they have any comments or questions. If not, this will go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation, and we will see this at a future date. Thank you, Ms. Spearman. We now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item is the cottages of Wellington rezoning, 15 REZ 14. Ms. Grant will give a report. We're going to hear from the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation, and council may take action. Ms. Grant.
Thank you. Good evening. This is a request to rezone approximately 5.49 acres located at the corner of Wellenborough Road and Tryon Road. Subject property is highlighted here in yellow. Land use plan designation was recently amended to medium-density residential. The existing zoning is residential 20 and residential 40, and the property is located a portion in a mixed-use overlay district. The proposed zoning is mixed-use district and to extend that district to include two adjacent parcels. The subject property is located on a thoroughfare, Tryon Road, and adjacent to Wellenborough Drive, which is a major collector road. When you first saw this plan at the initial town council public hearing, it proposed 14 detached residential lots. As you may recall, there was a 7,000-square-foot community gathering area. The plan proposed specific building setbacks and a minimum lot size of 5,118 square feet. There were concerns expressed by adjacent property owners about traffic, stormwater management, the perimeter buffer, the loss of office use in the area, and the proposed building setbacks. Since then, the plan was revised and reduced to 13 lots. When it was presented to the Planning and Zoning Board, the applicant also had modified the plan and added a six-foot-tall opaque fence with evergreen supplemental planting adjacent to the neighborhood to the north. And they had presented the 13 lots. That has since become official with an affidavit from the applicant asking for that reduction. There was another minor modification to the plan. They revised the road design slightly so that it met our design standards, because previously, they had proposed a private road. And when you have detached residential individual lots, a public road is required, so they clarified that. There were still some concerns about traffic that were presented at that meeting and some concerns about the buffer. The applicant has continued to work with the adjacent property owners and is prepared to speak to you tonight if you have any additional questions about that. At this time, I'll turn the podium over to the Planning and Zoning Board chair to discuss their recommendation.
Thank you, Deborah. Good evening. This was a 5-4 decision. It was back and forth, pretty strongly stated positions, both in favor and against. I'll take you to the highlights of each one of them. In the first, as Deborah mentioned, traffic was a serious consideration for the folks who just voted against this. There's just no good solution presented, and it wasn't as if something, an alternative was available that would have mitigated the traffic to their satisfaction. So at that point, it was just that the case before us was not satisfactory. The transition to the other areas in the neighborhood was insufficient also. There's a lot of sentiment as if this is being shoehorned into a spot where it's just simply not a good fit. On the other hand, the folks in support thought it was as consistent as we could get in a transition and in the size of the area with the MXD principles, with the, or the LDO that came with us, I'm sorry, not LDO, the comprehensive plan amendment that came conjoined with this thing to us. We thought it was at least as consistent as one could be in putting that forward. So split as close to down the middle as you can get, but it was approved.
Thank you, Mr. Vanjulies. Questions for Mr. Vanjulies? Thank you. Any questions or comments from council members? Or a motion, if you're ready?
The comment I have is, as the Chair of P&amp;Z mentioned, and we've looked at this, and this is one of those few, when you meet in the community, it's right down the middle. I mean, this is, this is, I've never seen one where, you know, if we had an even amount, it would be always four to four or something like this. It's a, it's a horrible crest on the hill with Tryon, the traffic. You know, we've tried for other developments in there to deal with that. It's just, it's just too close to the other lights. I, I would just be repeating myself with the chair said. I think, you know, there are valid points each way. This is just not very exciting. At the same time, I struggle with what the, you know, what the alternatives are, you know, so.
Is this a 51-49?
This is, yeah, it's like a 50-point, whatever it is.
51 to 49.
Yeah, 50.1 to 49.9. I, I just, I'd like to think there's something better for that intersection than squeezing 13 homes in, and I'm just not excited about it.
Other comments?
I mean, as far as an impact goes, I don't know what else we would get that would be much less of an impact. I mean, if it would go commercial or office, you're definitely going to see more traffic than you would with 13 units. I appreciate the applicant's efforts to at least reduce the density by one, the fence and additional landscaping, but can't say it gives me the warm and fuzzies, but I could think some other things that could be built here might be worse. So at the end of the day, the applicant does have a right to develop on their property, and I think they've done as good a job possible to mitigate some of the concerns, but I'm not, I'm not actually, you know, you're kind of echoing the struggle I have. The issue, I still think, is, you know, that unknown of what the other uses could be and that fear that it could be worse. But at the same time, as much as I applaud all the efforts made, and they are, they're quite a bit, is do we really want that residential right up on top of one of the busiest roads in the region?
It's a lot better than commercial or office or, God forbid, a gas station, you know, or something.
When I, when I look at people that put up next to busy roads, it's, I mean, it's their choice, and somebody's probably going to buy those houses, and they're back up to a busy road, and it's kind of like buying under the airport and then complaining about airplane noise. You can't, the airport was there first, the road was here first. It's not like we can widen Tryon Road into their backyard. It's already wide, it's wide as it's going to be, right? It's, it's maximum bits, so more power to them if they can sell them, if somebody's going to live there.
Other comments?
Oh, they'll sell them. I remember when they built the units across the railroad track behind my business, I was like, you gotta be kidding me, and sold like hotcakes.
It's Cary.
You know, going to be built. I just could not believe it. I'm glad that they put the, the additional buffer up along the neighborhood. I thought that was good. I'm particularly glad that they changed the standards for the road and that it's to our standards. I mean, I don't think I could have approved it otherwise, so I'm glad for that. It's tough, because the closer you get to the road, the less likely it is that you're going to be putting in large lots right next to the road. It's frequent that you see the smaller lots. There's definitely people out there who will want to buy these houses. I'm torn, but I agree with you, Dawn. I'm not sure what would be better there.
Mini storage.
We can find somebody who wants to do that.
Were you ready for a motion? Other comments?
I'll make a motion to approve 15 REZ 14.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one. Consistency statement.
Make a motion to approve the statement of consistency and reasonableness for 15 REZ 14.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Motion carries five to one. We have no closed session this evening, and unless council members have other actions they want to discuss this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's removed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
That's awesome.
Yeah.